I'll start now. Good afternoon, good evening to everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm calling the Monday, June 23rd, 2025 Education Operations Meeting, meeting two quarter. Agenda item two, excellence in action. John Muir, Principal Angela Rogers will share a brief update on the exciting things happening at John Muir. Take it over. And welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we're on. I'm Angela Rogers. I'm the proud principal at John Muir Middle School, and we are here today to update you on some of the great things that are happening at John Muir. I have some great guests here that I will let them introduce themselves.
I'm Anna Val Stanley, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Grayson Shodik, and I'm in sixth grade.
And I'm Hope Cameron, one of the associate principals at John Muir Middle School.
So, one of the things that we wanted to go over is updates that are happening at John Muir. So, as you know, we've been under construction for the last couple of years, and we are proud to say that we are probably about ninety-five percent complete, which is exciting, and the students will kind of go over some of the great additions and how that has led to some of the student success and some of the great things that happened at John Muir this school year.
One of the constructions was the, a bigger tech ed room, which allows us to spread out and have more room for presentations and allows us to have more supplies and more computers and students all in the same room.
We also have a brand-new manufacturing room. The old one was pretty small and didn't have enough space for both machinery and a lot of kids. Our new one has enough room for both machinery, kids, and a lot of storage space for other One really great new addition we've had this year is our new music wing. As a music student for the past three years, these rooms have been a big upgrade, and all of them are bigger and have better acoustics. The band orchestra rooms especially used to be a lot smaller, and band would have to practice in the auditorium. Now, we can practice in the band room because we have enough space, and we also have storage for all of our instruments, which is very convenient.
Another thing was the new gym. When it's, when there's bad weather outside and our sports can't play outside, we go into the gym. But we didn't have enough space, so we made a new one. We got a new one to help, to help more sports be able to practice indoors.
So, another area that we're pretty proud of is our fitness center. So, this was completed in the spring. So, in the back of the cafeteria, it used to be the old fitness center, and it was really hard to move and have instruction in a very cramped, crowded space. So, now, this past spring, we've had classes in the new fitness center where students are able to experience some of the new machines and technology in there that mimic more of what a fitness center would be like in real life. So, the teachers and students are pretty excited about that space as well.
So, our new secured entrance is just one of our many tools to help keep our students and staff safe while they're at school, and there are other some, there are also some other conveniences along with that.
One of the conveniences is that the main office window is right on your way to, to your classes. So, you can just drop off the note instead of going out of your way to go all the way to the office.
It's also a lot easier to navigate the school if you're a parent because the office is right there. So, if you are dropping something off for your kid or have to go pick them up, you can just walk straight in, and the door to the office is right there.
So, that was a lot about our construction updates. We have some other great things that are going on at John Muir.
So, as of this year, we now have advisory groups, which is fifteen minutes at the beginning of every day to work on team-building activities and things like that. Before, we would have team days, which were forty minutes once a week on Wednesdays, and those were very inconvenient as they left teachers with less time to do what they needed to do, and we would often get off of schedule. Now, we have adequate amounts of time to teach along with getting everything done that we needed to cover in advisory. We also have a lot of team-building activities, like we have door decorating contests that kids can work on during their advisory time, and students judge each classroom on who has the most creative door.
Another thing about advisories is that now we have vitals checks. It's kind of a plan and review thing. It helps you review what's happened through the week and helps you plan for the rest of it. There's also S, SEL, which is team builder activities to help you get to know your classmates more and work on team skills.
Some other highlights are, we just got our MRA data back, and you can see that we went up in all areas, which is a huge accomplishment. Some of the areas we went up are in educational efficacy, school climate, school belonging, and then staffing and student interpersonal skills. And the other huge jumps that we're pretty proud of are staff effectiveness, four points, supportive staff environment, and staff voice, which went up again, additional five points, empowering teachers, which is up four points, and student-led practices that went up, five points. In the spring, students, or right before the spring started, students took a trusted adult survey, and you can see here that ninety-one percent of students at John Muir have a trusted adult that they can go to. And we're looking at the survey that we have about seventy percent of mostly, or yes, definitely, students feel understood by staff and students within our building.
Another one of the questions was, what are your favorite things about being a Highlander? The common answers were friends, athletics and activities, assemblies, staff, food, movement, and school community.
On top of that, there were a lot of other cool things that happened at our school this year. First of all, we had quite a few all-school assemblies, and students could participate in the games and activities that we did during those. Governor Evers got to visit our school and interact with a lot of students during the day. We now have student-led morning announcements where kids can apply to be on the announcement team, and they can also be nominated to lead announcements that day by their teachers. We have Royal Scott, which is a student-led school newspaper. We have a lot of new sports and activities. For sports, we have baseball and softball, brand-new this year, and a lot of new clubs, like gardening club. And one nice thing to note is, a lot of these are student-led, so that leads to a better sense of inclusivity inside the school.
So, we just wanted to say thank you, and we are so proud to present to you today on some of the great things that are happening at John Muir.
Board members, any comments?
Yeah, and thank you for coming in. It's supposed to be your summer break, and you're still here, so.
We practiced a little bit before, so it was dedicated that they came in here.
Good, thank you.
Well, I'm glad you came in because I'm going to encourage you to think about your future at the high school level, and think about being a thespian, think about speech programs, debate programs. You both speak very well. I'd like to see you continue in those areas. Well done. Thank you. Moving right along, we have another group, South Mountain Principal Deb Heilmann. Will share a brief update on the exciting things happening in South Mountain. Glad to have you here, and thank you for being here.
Yes, good evening. I'm Deb Heilmann, the principal at South Mountain, and I'm joined here by Lily Hool, who was a fifth grader this year at our school. Tonight, we're going to share with you a spotlight on our fifth-grade class and what they love about South Mountain. Every year at South Mountain, we celebrate our fifth-grade elementary career with a small graduation ceremony. This year was a little bit different, as for the first time in my fourteen years there, I had a student who, all on their own, without any prompting from teachers or parents, submitted to me a speech that she was hoping she'd be able to read on graduation night. As I read it, I realized that she did an amazing job highlighting what makes fifth grade so special and wonderful for our students, not only in our district, but specifically at South Mountain. The student that submitted that speech was Lily, so I've asked her to join me tonight so you can hear some of what she shared as highlights at South Mountain the night of graduation. So, Lily will take it from here.
South Mountain Elementary. Good evening, everyone, teachers, family, friends, and classmates. My name is Lily, and I'm so excited, and maybe a little surprised, that we're already graduating from South Mountain Elementary. It's been an amazing journey, and today we get to celebrate all the memories that we've made, everything we've learned. And first, I want to give a huge thank you to our fifth-grade teachers, Ms. Young and Ms. Combs. You both have made this year so fun, exciting, and full of learning. We appreciate everything you've done for us, and of course, a shout-out to all the substitute teachers who helped us out this year, too. We also want to give a huge, we also want to give a thank you to our awesome encore teachers, Ms. Martin, Ms. Michael, Ms. Gronn, Mr. Falk, and Ms. Johnson. Whether we're in art, music, gym, library, or science, you all made learning extra fun and gave us a chance to be creative, move around, and try new things. Thank you for helping us grow in so many different ways. This year was full of unforgettable memories. Eighties Day was a total blast that outfits, the music, the laughter, definitely something we'll always remember. The school forest trip was a great adventure, and Valentine's Day brought lots of fun, and who doesn't want a shoebox full of candy and knickknacks and awkwardly-signed cards? Even the student-led conferences turned out to be fun. Who would have guessed? More than any, more than anything, we've learned how to work together, we've built teamwork and participation skills, and let's be honest, we figured out how to survive group projects without pulling out hair. That deserves a round of applause all by itself. Now, be honest, there's no way you can look me in the eye and tell me you're not at least a little, um, at least a little nervous that we're already going to middle school. But I know it's going to be great. We're ready for new challenges, new friends, and new adventures. To my fellow fifth graders, thank you for all the laughs, the support, and the good times. Let's keep being kind, hard-working, and remembering where we came from. South Mountain Elementary. Congratulations, class of two thousand thirty-two, we did it.
So, that was something that made the evening very special, and I think very brave for Lily to submit that. Another special thing that happened on that night was that this year, all of our fifth graders shared some special memories or highlights of their elementary career, and that we have in a slideshow for you. As I watched the presentation, I couldn't help but reflect on the impact that South Mountain staff and community have had on these students. We often hear from our high school graduates, but it was fun to hear from our fifth-grade students what makes school so special for them, so I hope you enjoy hearing from them.
I guess we need to sign one. And we even tested it, right?
We might need Ross's hand.
My favorite memory is probably truck or treat.
Now, I'm going to school into the, um, the school forest and like just hanging out there.
Still, I gotta beat the Madison trip during fourth grade because it was one of the best trips.
My favorite memory is going to the school.
Some of my favorite memories at South Mountain were the Madison field trip in fourth grade. We went to the zoo and a lot of other fun stuff. Also, the school forest because we had a lot of fun and about to have, like, overnight camp. Probably the school forest because we didn't sit there any more than.
My favorite memories being at South Mountain is our basketball jamery, the one we won in all four games.
The best thing about being a fifth grader is that you get lots of opportunities, like on field trips, and if you're safety patrol, you get to go on like the Y or Action City.
Probably going to the school forest and like all the other fun field trips.
My favorite thing about being a fifth grader is that at the end of the year, you get to go to Action City.
The best thing about being a fifth grader is all the freedom you get in the field trips since last year, so you get to.
Best thing about being a fifth grader is that you get to hang out with your friends, and when you go home, you can meet up with them and play games.
Getting to know more people and like getting to do, um, these like special things and meeting like.
Best thing about being a fifth grader is that, like, you just, like, enjoy it while you have time and like have fun with all your friends.
You get to do fun opportunities like safety patrol and, and we all get to do much, much of field patrol, but that's.
Do all these fun things that, things that like make it helpful.
That you get to hang out with little buddies, and it's going to be super exciting when you go to sixth grade.
Being like the oldest kid in the school and having all the younger kids look up to you. And also, like, now I kind of have like a lot of things to look forward to in middle school.
Have all these like fun students and these fun like places that you can go, and all of your teachers are like very nice and all this.
All the opportunities and like, for example, the school forest trip and having our buddies, so that's.
Oldest in the elementary school and having little kids look up to you.
Probably the carnival.
Well, if you're on safety patrol, you get to go to the Y and Action City.
You get like many opportunities, you do such great things in your beautiful fifth-grade life.
I'm going to miss the teachers the most because they're really nice.
Probably the teachers and all the opportunities we have, and I really enjoyed safety patrol.
I probably miss all the nice teachers and all the things that we get to do in fifth grade.
Probably like all the people here in the building because we've been here for like six years now.
I'm going to miss all the amazing friends and teachers.
I'm going to miss all the amazing teachers and all the little kids that are in classes below us that I won't see again, and I'm also going to miss sleeping in because we're going to have to get up early.
My friends that are in our grades and all of the teachers and all the fun.
My friends and my teachers and yeah.
And I'm also just going to miss coming to school every day and saying, here's another thing you know, a bunch of schools.
Like entire community and all the family members that are helping out with our school and like all these, like the end of year carnival and just all these amazing opportunities we've had as students and just as a community.
I miss everyone because it's my sixth year here, and I feel like we're just a big family because we've all been with each other for six years and it's the whole building and everybody because I've been here for, this is my sixth year here, and I, I don't know, I just miss it.
All right, so hopefully you enjoyed hearing from the fifth graders and what they loved. I think there's a couple highlights we know in our, in our district that definitely stick out. I think the school forest for sure was one. So, thank you for giving us a chance to share a little bit about South Mountain with you. Before I conclude, I do want to make sure to give a special thanks to one of our fifth grade parents who helped put that slideshow together, so thank you to Brittany Van den Langenberg for that, and thank you to Lily for coming in on her summer break as well. Thank you very much.
Any comments?
Good job, Lily. It's interesting that you liked Eighties Day because when I was in fifth grade, we did Eighties Day every day. In sixth grade.
That's a long time ago.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that the kids know that we have some really awesome teachers at John Muir, too, so they're going to miss their awesome teachers where they were, but they're going to get more.
You have a lot of students that have bright futures coming to the middle school.
Yes.
You definitely have a bright future, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's always the fun time, is to be able to see what's going on in the schools. I greatly appreciate that. Mr. Bushman, it's a, it's a good presentation for us all. Now, moving along, I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number five, public and student comment. We do have a couple of people, so I'm going to just read this off real quickly here. With, with the presentation, your presentation in three minutes, I would like to remind the public that we appreciate the comments and the reminders are specific. Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes, and Ms. Pack will keep you asked. So, thank you for being here to give comments, and we will begin first with Chesney Everline.
Can I say my name?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Chesney Everline. Address is fourteen oh five Prospect Avenue here in Wausau. All right. I'm here as a parent of a child at Red Granite Charter School, and I wanted to express the value that this school holds for our family. My child Wyatt attended preschool last school year and will be going into kindergarten this fall. When the Wausau School District Board approved partnership with Red Granite, I and my family were overjoyed. We're one of many families that want alternative options to the traditional school model, and Red Granite is designed to have a Waldorf curriculum combined with outdoor education. And if Red Granite's vision is implemented, it would be my ideal situation for our children's education. When Waldorf schools have the freedom to implement their pedagogy and curriculum as it was created, students thrive. If I had to choose one aspect of Waldorf education that excites me the most, it's that the approach fosters a love of learning. As a parent, there is so much joy in witnessing your child develop, an intrinsic motivation to learn. Our experience at Red Granite this past school year was very positive, and we're excited to keep our enrollment at the school. I would also enroll my one-year-old once he's school-aged. Wyatt looks forward to going to school. He has a good relationship with his teacher and classmates, and I attribute this to the Red Granite's core principle of fostering a culture of healthy relationships. This extends from the individual student to the classroom and out to the school community. I hope that Wyatt can continue learning in this atmosphere as it was envisioned and agreed upon at the beginning of this partnership because we really love our school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next individual, Kathy Meyer.
My name is Kathy Meyer. I live at thirty-eight twenty-five Woodland Ridge Road here in Wausau, and I, you can look at me and say I have a lot more gray hair than the average Red Granite parent, and that's because I am a Red Gran, grandmother of a, of a kindergarten student. I'm here as a taxpayer. I'm also here, I think I bring a perspective, education is near and dear to my heart. I'm a retired educator. I spent thirty-five years involved, both in teaching and in administrative roles, and so I really tuned in to what was going on when Red Granite was, I, I'm not sure I was on board at the very beginning, but when my family became involved. And, you know, I saw the excitement. I saw many positives. I saw the planning. I saw parents putting their heads together. I saw parents out at Hewitt, Texas, which was the perfect place for Red Granite Charter School because of the nature, outdoor nature element involved there. I saw parents who were so thrilled to be having a unique option, and certainly, options make a district great. Options should be about, districts should be about offering options to families. That's what we're for. That's what, what they do. And, you know, there is absolutely for, it's just a matter of knowing what your child needs and, and going for it. And traditional ed is certainly has its place and needs its support, but I was very, very happy that my little grandson could become involved out at Red Granite. I saw him pumped up for school. I'm talking about all the things I saw that were positive, and if I start getting long, tell me at midpoint because I'll talk quicker. I saw him pumped up every single day he went out the door to school, and parents transported. I mean, they, they made a commitment to get their kid there. I transported at times. I made a commitment that he, he get there, or at least get picked up on some days. You know, but it was, it was for him. He loves nature. He loves outdoor. He loves, you know, outside anything, and the learning, the conceptual learning that took place because they could pick up a rock or dig for a fossil or, you know, look at a strawberry and dissect the pieces and put the holes together. That, that was very real to those children, and I saw the growth of that. I saw the excitement of it. Oh, boy. Gone or left? I have thirty seconds left? Oh, my goodness. I saw dedicated teachers, thank you, but above all, and I want to say this, I saw a community out there like I never, I'm not going to say never, but like near and dear to my heart kind of community out there. People coming back, teachers coming back, working evenings, having nighttime programs, which I was lucky enough to be a part of, invited to.
That's a good place to stop.
Okay. You can tell I was fired up.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Looking forward to more exciting presentations like this as well. Claire Gillick.
I knew I only had three minutes, so I really hope that I can keep it short. I have a lot to say. My name is Claire Gillick. This is my son Caleb. My address is five six zero three Winding Creek Drive in Weston. So, I am a mom of a kindergartner at Red Granite School, Caleb here. I'm here tonight to speak about the importance of Waldorf education, not only for the students it serves, but also for the health and the strength of our entire community. Waldorf education is rooted in the understanding that learning should meet children where they are developmentally. In an age where academic pressure is creeping earlier and earlier, Waldorf prioritizes the whole child, nurturing intellectual growth alongside emotional maturity and physical development. This isn't just philosophy, it's backed by decades of child development. Children learn best when the timing and style of teaching align with their natural stages of growth, and that's what I've seen with my son Caleb, as well as the majority. You can tell I was fired up.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Looking forward to more exciting presentations like this as well. Claire Gillick.
I knew I only had three minutes, so I really hope that I can keep it short. I have a lot to say. My name is Claire Gillick. This is my son Caleb. My address is 5603 Winding Creek Drive in Weston. So I am a mom of a kindergartner at Red Granite School, Caleb here. I'm here tonight to speak about the importance of Waldorf education, not only for the students it serves, but also for the health and the strength of our entire community. Waldorf education is rooted in the understanding that learning should meet children where they are developmentally. In an age where academic pressure is creeping earlier and earlier, Waldorf prioritizes the whole child, nurturing intellectual growth alongside emotional maturity and physical development. This isn't just philosophy. It's backed by decades of child development. Children learn best when the timing and style of teaching align with their natural stages of growth. And that's what I've seen with my son Caleb, as well as the majority of his classmates at Red Granite Charter School. What sets Waldorf apart is its strong foundation in social-emotional learning, which I know is a strategic plan, a priority for many school districts across the state of Wisconsin as well as nationally. Every day, Waldorf classrooms are built on rhythm, relationships, as well as respect. Students learn not only math and reading, but also empathy, collaboration, and resilience. In today's world, where children face increasing levels of anxiety, isolation, and disconnection, these human skills are more important than ever. The impact of this approach radiates beyond the classroom. Families at Red Granite and Waldorf communities across the nation report a stronger sense of community. Students grow into grounded, curious, and confident young people. Waldorf education aligns seamlessly with the goals outlined in our district's strategic plan, particularly around social-emotional development and universal design for learning. Waldorf's integrated approach naturally supports SEL by building self-awareness and emotional regulation. And because Waldorf curriculum is multisensory, movement-based, and adaptable, it already reflects the key principles of universal design for learning. In essence, Waldorf is already doing the work our district is striving toward. Tonight, Red Granite is asking for more. More support for this program, more transparency, a permanent home, and more partnership between the district, Red Granite Governance Board, and families who believe in this work. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next person, Lawrence Gillick. Just hand the baton off.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Lawrence Gillick, and my address is 5603 Winding Creek Drive in Weston. I'm here today to, as a parent of a Waldorf student, and asking you to see the incredible potential of the Red Granite Charter School, not just as an experiment, but as a vital, evidence-based alternative that is already making a difference in children's lives. As a school librarian, my focus to you today is gonna be about early literacy. When deciding to send my child to Red Granite, it was imperative to me that he was inspired and encouraged at this age to value stories and literature while being guided in the skills needed for reading. As a whole, Waldorf education is built around that simple idea that children learn best when we meet them where they are. And in the early years, for reading, it means nurturing a deep love of language, using things like story, rhythm and rhymes, playing, performances. All these are essential foundations for using literacy in communication and building community. Waldorf classrooms, they ignite this curiosity and connection. As you've heard, it's not just compliance, but it's intrinsic motivation. They support the joy of reading before the pressure of testing. In a system where children are often asked to perform before they're ready, Waldorf protects that spark of intrinsic motivation to learn. When students are emotionally supported and developmentally honored, they don't just learn to read, but they want to read. And as a librarian for 17 years, I know what kind of impact that has when a student wants to read rather than is being forced to. And that spark can be put out pretty early in kids who love to read at kindergarten, first grade, and all of a sudden, they see it as a threat, and they start feeling alienated from all sorts of literature and books. And it's just devastating to see. And as a librarian, and a lot of teachers in public schools, in traditional schools, we work hard to avoid that, and I just love seeing how Red Granite really values that ability to give them that empowerment. Families and teachers are already seeing the benefits. There's calmer classrooms, stronger relationships, and children who are engaged, imaginative, and thriving. They're learning the value of a connected and compassionate community. Their futures will be bright, as you've seen in some others' kids. They're bright, they got bright futures, but our community is gonna be brighter because of their futures as well, as we see them build and strengthen our community. But the vision can't grow without your support. It's only been one year, so closing or disabling the school right now before it takes root is denying the family education that they came here hoping to find. So, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
You had the timing already. I didn't have to do that. Thank you very much. Next individual, I believe it's Amy Wilson.
Hi. My name is Ariel Wilson. I am a Red Granite Charter School parent for a kindergartner going into first grader. And I'm here today to talk about the importance of Red Granite Charter School. And I could spend the three minutes that I have talking about the impact my school, the school built for my daughter. They built her confidence. I could talk about the community that was built in just this first year. I could talk about how I saw everything firsthand, being in the classrooms, all of the classrooms with all of the students, that community that was built. But I'm gonna talk about business instead. I'm gonna talk about tangible numbers. And I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room and all of the rooms in public schools across the state and across the nation. I'm gonna talk about traditional public schools and their dropping enrollment numbers. In 2015, Wausau School District was looking at being at capacity and overcapacity with all of the schools open. 10 years later, we are looking at a 70% capacity while closing schools. We are not an anomaly. Kindergarten enrollment in the state of Wisconsin has dropped across the board at a 3.8% decline each year. The projected decline in the state in the next five years is 6% to 9% decline in public school enrollment. And that is increasing to an 11% to 16% decline in the next 10 years. To put that in numbers, if my math was right, that's 480 students per year, the first year, just in the Wausau School District. And double that, more than double that in the next 10 years. In contrast, choice schools like Virtual Charter Co-ops, they're growing at a 26.7% increase per year currently. Families are focusing on education options that are not traditional, like Red Granite Charter School. They're looking at class sizes, the academics, the flexibility, personalization, focus on family, and family involvement. These are all reasons studies have shown this drastic change. So I'm here today to remind the district of these numbers, numbers that are gonna make or break this district and community. As a district, are we going to get with the trends and make moves to keep up with the changes? Are we gonna be left behind? We have a unique opportunity with Waldorf, with the Red Granite School. Waldorf's campuses have a 94% college-bound rate of their graduates. That's incredible. Our sister school in Amherst School District, Tomorrow River Community Charter School, has the fastest-growing enrollment in all of their districts. People are traveling up to two hours just to attend that campus. The potential is there. Across the U.S., traditional public school enrollment has lost 1.75 million students, while charters are growing 400,000 per year. And I know I'm running out of time, but my point is let's not be left behind. I can show you where these statistics come from, but this is the future. Charter schools are the future, so let's get with it.
Thank you. Next individual, Charlie Helms. Passing? Thank you. Lauren Steidel. It's one of the reasons why we have you. State your name at the beginning in case it's crucified in any way. You can correct me.
Yeah, Lauren Steidel, 1420 North Third Ave. I'm here today because my son is a, just finished his kindergarten year at Red Granite Charter School. He is going into first grade, and I wanted to talk about his, the impact this school has had on him. We had him in a school, a traditional school within the Wausau School District before this, and my son has an IEP. And in that school, we saw improvements. It was a 4K classroom in the Wausau School District. It was great. But his IEP team actually were the ones who recommended we sent him to Red Granite because he was not ready for a traditional classroom. He wanted movement. He wanted play. He wanted to experience what he's learning. He didn't want to sit and do worksheets. And as a five-year-old, six-year-old, it's very difficult for any child that age. And so when we originally were looking to what school we were going to put him in, my husband and I were looking outside of the district because we were not ready to put him into a regular school. And then this board was presented with Red Granite, and they brought Red Granite, and we were thrilled. And we were so thankful and grateful for this because he got his spot, and he has improved significantly this year. He is still in an IEP program, but with Red Granite and the way they approach education, he was in his classroom with his peers, and he was able to keep up with his peers. And Red Granite talks about social-emotional behavior, and that's where he needed to be. And he, the boy who went into kindergarten and the boy who came out, you wouldn't see the same boy. And that's what made us so grateful for the school that came in and grateful for the school district because, as you have heard, charter schools are becoming more and more popular. And traditional schools aren't for every child. My son would probably be drowning in a traditional classroom and getting left behind. He would be a statistic that brought this school down. Instead, he's going to be one of the many successful statistics that help push this school district forward. It's going to help raise the positive statistics. He, when we talked about Red Granite and when we wanted to go, he was so excited because he got to see his friends every day. And he says, he may say, he comes home and plays, and what do you do at school? Play. But when you talk to him, the way he talks at people, his vocabulary, the things that he learned through that play is right in line with any other kindergarten classroom, just in a different setting. And that's what was so important to my husband and I. So we thank you guys so much for bringing it to Wausau, and we hope that continues in the future.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Jay Croninwetter.
Jay Croninwetter, 117 Sturganetti. My son, I have a kid going into second grade, and he goes to John Marshall, same school I started off in. My family's lived at Sturganetti for ages. In fact, before I was born, my great aunt resided at that residence for many, many years, and she was a longtime educator. Worked for, I believe it was the state, but was in charge of, you know, teacher education for rural schools. Quite a long time ago. And she saw over the course of her career, you know, big changes in this school district and the state education. And going from, you know, these small, hyper-local rural schools to larger, more urban schools was a huge change that, you know, from family lore, she was not terribly confident about. But at the end of the day, seeing educators and communities come together and consolidate resources in larger institutions, you know, won her over. And she knew a hell of a lot more about education than I do. And these folks know a lot more about the Waldorf model than I do. Never, I mean, what I had read about in the past, I was never a big fan of. I'm, I believe in, I mean, for my son anyways, he needs to sit down and learn to concentrate and stay off screens and focus. I think the classroom, traditional classroom is great for him. But I know from speaking to other parents that it's not that way for all the kids. And this district has a long history of special programs and finding ways to make different models of education work, whether it's storefront or the International Baccalaureate Program, which saved me hundreds of thousands of dollars when I got scholarships to university and law school, which I would not have gotten without that diploma, mind you. You know, that's a tradition we should continue. And there is a strong base of people who like this program and want to keep it going. And to echo something that, you know, Ms. Wilson talked about in the business side of things, but more importantly, on the community side of things as well, you know, the perceived lack of support from the district for this institution has already cost this community and this school district quite significantly. One of, you know, I practice law in the area. One of my colleagues who I respect the most, one of the more intelligent men I know, his children were at this school. They loved it. And, you know, as I said, it's not, for me, not for my kid, but he's a very intelligent man who came to a different conclusion, and now his children are no longer in the district. And he and his wife are no longer parents in this district. They went to a Waldorf school that they could trust would be there and would have the support. We've already been losing for a lack of support here. Let's rally behind these families and find a way to make it work.
Jay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you to all of you who have given your comments. We appreciate the fact that you come and take the time to speak to us. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we've got some presentations to take place today. We have referendum update and the next steps. Nexus and Josh Fagou will present on the 2022 Capitol referendum construction and budget updates. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
Thank you so much. It has been a little bit since we had a construction update on our 2022 Capitol referendum. Brief reminder, that was a $119.8 million referendum. So we have a couple of folks here from Nexus to get us up to speed. Kevin Hickman is new to you guys. He is working with our project and with us and works with school districts across the state. Russ Schumacher is one of the principals at Nexus. He has been in front of us before. And Chris Ludden is our senior project manager. He's taking the place of Nick Anderson, who used to do these updates before. So with that, I will turn it over to Nexus.
All right, Josh, thank you. Just wanted to briefly kick off. We hand over to Russ. Tonight, we'll keep it concise and to the point in just time for you. And if you have any questions, please let us know. We're just gonna give you a brief update on some of the work that's going on and what's coming up here in the near future. Russ is gonna give us an update on budgets and kind of where the numbers are looking to be, and then I'm just gonna wrap up with some next. Thank you.
Before I do that, though, Chris will walk us through the construction update.
Hi there, I'm Chris Ludden. I am managing the construction work here in the district, and I'm really proud to be able to do that, so thank you for the opportunity. Live within a half hour here, so we definitely are a part of the community with my family as well. So we want to start off with John Muir Middle School, and it's really hard to follow up to those great middle schoolers that put on the presentation. They basically stole it from me.
They set your stage, by the way. They set your stage.
Yeah, you guys should be proud of them kids because, man, they knocked it out of the park, so. So anyways, we're pretty well wrapped up with construction there. All the interior spaces are turned over, construction cleaned and in use. So, you know, that really went well. The fitness additions completed, the multipurpose addition, that's all done. Exterior renovations. We got a few civil punch list items we're working on yet, but for the most part, those are complete. The band and choir upgrades, the, that's all done. The kids are moved in there and enjoying that well. And then we brought in our commissioning team. They're going through, and they're looking at the existing equipment that's within the facility and then all the new equipment that's there as well. They're marking down the information off of those and then making sure that they're working properly. So our work in progress right now is our final punch list. We got a couple of items that are on there yet that just, you know... We got a couple of items that are on there yet that just, you know, sometimes things don't quite work as well as intended or just need to be fixed up a little bit. So they're, they're working through that. As I discussed, our commissioning, we, the guys are in there. They're, they're testing HVAC systems to make sure that that functions properly. And then they're going to do a cooling season, season functional performance test here in a couple of weeks to, to make sure that that's all verified. The only other thing we really have is that we have a few small civil restorations that is going on to, to wrap this up. But that pretty much takes us through John Mearr. Moving on to Wassa West, this is a project that is currently under heavy construction. Last week, we had approximately 75 workers onsite. So there's, there's a lot of progress moving and it moves quickly right now. All, all ongoing activities are on schedule. And we got some really great contractors on this project as well where they're, they know the deadline and they're, they're doing everything they can to meet it. So some of our work that we just recently completed was the fitness addition, the front office renovation, gym storage addition, the locker rooms. And here again, they're, they're verifying some of the installation of the HVAC equipment. Moving on to the work in progress, the LED lighting upgrades are wrapping up. The kitchen commons remodel is under heavy construction right now. The window replacement is probably 75 to 80% complete. The foods renovation, the demo is completed and now we're starting to put that area back together. And then we'll be testing the, the cooling seasonal functional performance test as well within the next couple of weeks. Moving on to Horace Mann, this is another very active job site with 35 to 40 onsite workers daily. All work there is also on schedule. And we've, we've turned some of these areas over already with the final cleans being completed in the areas. And we, we've got like the school nurses starting to, to move into her area, which really turned out nice. It's a very nice, large area for her. The other work that's completed is the front office renovations, the Montessori addition. And then they're moving on to verifying the equipment installation. The work in progress right now is the Montessori interior renovations of those classrooms. So new ceilings, new lights, new plumbing fixtures. So that's pretty heavy. Some new secured entrances there. The athletic addition, that's ongoing, that's pretty much watertight. And we'll be finishing it with the final paint and such flooring moving, moving forward here. Our library kitchen, or library and kindergarten renovations, that's, there was a large task there. The guys are doing very well on that with the library area pretty much being finished up right now. Our locker room renovations are in heavy construction on a couple of those areas. And then we're going to do our cooling season functional performance verification as well in a couple of weeks there. And then we have civil site work ongoing throughout the course of the summer here. Then I just had one more. We didn't have a slide for East High School. We have a LED lighting upgrade renovation that's ongoing. They're about 90% underway with completion. They're scheduled for mid-August. So pretty much wraps up our construction update.
As far as the budget update goes, we've had great results up to this point and wanted to bring you up to speed on them. 12 of the, it's actually 18. We've, there's four projects yet to be bid. 12 of the 18 projects came under the original conceptual budget. And what's important about that is a lot of the projects were budgeted before the, kind of the hyperinflation we experienced during, during post-COVID in, in the construction industry. So having two-thirds of those come in under budget, I was very thankful from the fact that we didn't have to come in front of you early in the project's process to either eliminate scope or say, we don't have enough funds to, to, to complete the work that was planned because we do. And we'll show you in a minute, the news actually gets better. All projects were delivered on schedule. We had excellent bid participation in all of the projects up to this point. The, the two that are under heavy construction right now, Horace Mann and West, with the multiple work scopes that we had, 13 at Horace Mann and 16 at West, breaking that project into multiple work scopes helps get the best possible price for the scope of work and ultimately for the taxpayer. We had 42 contractors bid Horace Mann, 51 bid West, and three general contractors, large general contractors bid Horace Mann and four actually bid West. So we've got an excellent bid participation to get scope bid at the most cost-effective way to the, for the, to the taxpayer. Along with that, once we get into construction, you know, a national average of, of change orders or things that come up during a project unforeseen, things that have to be changed from what's on paper to what's, when you start to take walls apart and ceilings down. Typically, the national average is 5 to 6%. We budget 5% on our projects. We're running less than 2% right now. Many contractors in the business will actually budget 10% for a remodel. 5% is typically reserved for newer construction, but we, we typically can, can accommodate it for under 2% on our projects. And we are on your project as well. So things are moving forward very positively and, and, and on time. As far as the remaining budget, there's four remaining schools that we're continuing the design process on. And that's John Marshall, Franklin, Lincoln and Rib Mountain. We have $2 million budgeted in, in that portion. And typically, you've seen this in a spreadsheet that Josh has put together. And what we did is took components of that spreadsheet. All of these numbers are on that spreadsheet, but put them into a summary. And the remaining projects, there's, call it 2, 2, 2,044,000 encumbered. Currently, there's a, a bid underage on the entire portfolio of projects of over $2 million. There's also remaining budget for the closed schools of 2.59 million. That's currently not encumbered. There's contingency on our projects that are currently in process. We're running under budget on those by 1.3 million. And that's an additional to everything that's shown above. And then you also have district-wide projects for the technology and furniture district-wide that it's right around that 6.2 million, based on all the information we have right now. So we basically have about 11% of the budget remaining for 1.5% of the work scope remaining. So the district in a really good position right now financially on these construction projects as we kind of see the finish line ahead. We're going to continue working hard. We're going to continue to stay focused and, and get us across the finish line. So we're, we're, we're very proud of the work that we've been able to accomplish with the district in this partnership. Having very strong involvement by the, the admin teams, the building users. They've all have their handprints of all of these designs. They weren't just designs that were, that were implemented. There was a lot of input throughout the district and we're very proud of the work to date and look forward to, to getting, getting across the finish line. As far as the, the projects that remain, like I said, Franklin, we're 50% through the John Marshall design process. We're going to continue on with Frank and Lincoln, Rib Mountain. Everybody can focus, kind of pushing all of those to the finish. We're, we're remaining true to the original referendum scope. Those are kind of the line items there that were part of the FIM sum, if you recall, from your, probably a couple of years back of all of the items, the facility improvement measures. Those we just kind of put in graphical format for the work that's left. There may be some upgrades with mass notification and clock and PA. So some of the scope we're still working through right now with the district. But we expect, we, we have to keep, daylight's burning in order to get these projects out for bid for next summer's work. Any questions on the overall budget or addition, or scopes that remain for the four projects that were part of the referendum?
Just one. I know you said you're looking for next summer work for those four remaining schools. When are you thinking we're going to know the bid, bid amounts and, you know, how much is, we're over or under on those?
You know, we're hoping to bid those out obviously in December, January for optimal pricing. That would probably be the timeframe there. And it a little depends too on kind of the next step for the, some of the remaining funds that are available that Kevin will talk about here in a second.
Thanks. All right, just kind of wrapping up and I'll just reiterate a little bit what Russ said. It's been, it's been a sustained experience working with Josh, Ryan and the, and the team to this point. Really, I think that collaboration has got us here and it's been, it's been a true pleasure to really help you develop solutions for the staff, students and community. So thank you. So as we said, I could just kind of boiling down a couple of next steps here from the board perspective is, as Russ said, we're going to continue to design on, on, on the work that essentially would take place next summer, right? So keep trucking along on that. As he said, the daylight's burning, so we're going to move along on that. And then really the next step that we wanted to kind of finish up with you tonight would be to propose that we come back to you at a future meeting sometime very soon, probably in July timeframe, after we've worked with the district to really help you prioritize how that remaining funding could be allocated to invest in your facilities, to both align with what the original referendum intent was and also to get you the value for the taxpayers. So, so that's what we like to do is come back after we work with the, with the admin team and give you suggestions on priorities and let you guys weigh in on that and make sure you give us direction on the board.
Well, you already answered a question that I would have had for you, so I won't have to ask the question. Thank you.
Good, good. So I know it's, this meeting's going along already, so I don't want to take any longer than we need to. But I do want to open up to any questions anybody in the board may have.
Do you have a breakdown that you can share with us for the four projects again?
I can provide you the spreadsheet we usually look at.
The 4.6, that's, that's after pulling money out for the technology, the iPad?
Yeah, so right, right now, a great question, Lance. That 4.6 is essentially that, those two rows in the middle, the current big bid underage and then the remaining referendum budget allocated to the closed schools.
Ah, okay.
So, so it's not touching the technology dollars at all?
So it's not touching that district-wide technology? So we, there's even likely some more there that we have to decide in terms of furnishings and, okay.
And then we didn't want to necessarily put the car before, before the horse and, and put the remaining contingency into that number just yet, Lance? Cause some of that will be allocated into existing projects going forward. Some of it certainly can be used.
Right. As we finish the next few months, we're going to gobble up some of that 1.3 million that's left. But there is more work that you can do within the referendum funding stream.
I think it's going to be an important meeting coming up that you can help us decide what we're going to do, what we could do with the money that we do have that has been saved and where that can go. So other questions from the board?
I have more of a question for you. When these two projects, the West and the Mann are finished, could we get a board tour? Like before a meeting or something?
Yeah, it's a great idea. In fact, we had talked about actually having the board meeting at the schools. Maybe then you could have community come in and see what they have as well.
When you're assessing things and making suggestions about the extra money, not remembering everything that was in the CISA 10 reports, is there any school that I guess is, can we finish it? Because I've brought this up a couple of times, like trying to finish projects all at one building. So don't have to do anything to the building? Or are we going to end up probably prioritizing? Yeah. But again, you know, talking with Mr. Remanski, you know, if that's, makes sense for the normal steps that, in his chart that he's taking, right? So there could be things that are prioritized, but instead, but.
I think it's fair to say he's got some things prioritized.
Yeah. And I understand what you're saying. It'd be great to check one off, but we also want to look at, with looking at that assessment.
Yeah, if something else is broken more, then it'd probably be on the top of the list.
It has to be tied in with what was the original referendum. It can't be just something else that wants to be, we want to check off. But it's got to be pertinent to what was stated to our community. So that's what we would be looking at, Josh, to be able to give us what would be in alignment in order to use that money going forward. Other questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Very informative and we appreciate the information. Good item number seven. Time for the annual renewal of our WIAA memberships at Wassa East, Wassa West, EEA and WAVE. An example of the renewal application is attached. Each school will have a renewal completed, so I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to share with you, for the renewal of the WIAA membership, we will not include John Mearr or Horace Mann this year due to us supporting those middle school athletics out of Fund 80. So that's all community students, any students in the district can participate. So private school students can participate. And to be a WIAA school, you, only your full-time students can participate. So that's just a change moving forward next year.
And just to add on to that, expectations will still be mirrored to the code and all the things that we do at the high school. That'll be mirrored down at the middle schools as well. So nothing really changes in terms of practice or scope for them.
And in talking with Stephanie Howser at WIAA today, matter of fact, approximately 30 to 40 junior highs are associated with the WIAA. That's 20 to 40 junior highs of state. Those that are not, most junior highs do not get involved, but they do follow what the high schools do in that, in that district. And so this is not uncommon. And she also said that she's been feeling a lot of questions pertaining to the Fund 80. A lot of districts and a lot of cities are now really supporting the school district at the middle school level through fundraising. I thought I'd throw that in because I knew we were going to be talking about it. I wanted to hear what the WIAA had to say as well. So just a little bit more information for you.
Okay.
With that, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the WIAA renewals for Wassa East, Wassa West, EEA and WAVE as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Agenda item eight, moving right along. Dr. Katie Colwell will join with Michelle. Will provide annual notice of the adoption of the Wisconsin academic standards by the Wassa School District. The Wisconsin academic standards outline for districts the knowledge and skills students should acquire in each content area throughout their education. The standards also provide guidance for the teachers during the development of their lesson plans and instructional practices, ensuring students are learning the skills they need. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Julie and I are here for your approval to use the Wisconsin academic standards for the 25-26 school year. And on the next slide is just a quick review. Those standards were created in 1988. And then in 2015, Wisconsin Act 55 was signed into law for districts to bring that annual notice of standards to their school boards. As you can see, there's approximately 22 content areas that have standards. And because of that, the DPI uses a six to seven year cycle where they review those standards. So this fall, like October, they will review social studies and, social studies and music education. So they do that on a six to seven year cycle and then districts then adopt those standards as well.
And the standards are critical for us in the district because they do provide what we want students to know and be able to do. Our curriculum are our tools that help us support the learning and give teachers those devices in which to teach to the standards. But the standards truly are what we want students to know and be able to do. So we have lots of ways that we unpack those standards and utilize those through our leadership teams and our departments by identifying those key learning outcomes, aligning those depth of knowledge with our assessments, discussing potential shifts in teacher practice when there's different revisions that occur that enhance the learning experience for kids with that rigor and relevance. And then alignment, of course, to our curricular resources. So they are a critical piece for us in the teaching and learning that we do every day in the district. So we are asking for a motion to approve the Wisconsin academic standards for use in the 25-26 school year.
What I'll do is I'll seek the motion and then open up for questions if there are. I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the 2025-2026 academic standards as presented. Questions? Any follow-up questions? Any follow-up questions for the two? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item nine, annually, AGR-eligible schools are required to present student outcomes to the school board. Michelle, Director of Elementary Education, in collaboration with the AGR principals, will present the spring semester short-cycle report to the Board of Education for your information. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thanks. I'm going to have our teammates here introduce themselves, but we are here to give you information regarding our second semester achievement gap reduction, student outcome scores, and answer any questions you have. So we're going to have my esteemed colleagues introduce themselves.
Jen Davidson, Principal at Lincoln, and then we'll be at Jones.
Megan Corack, Principal at Grant, will be at Jefferson.
Matt Schilling, Principal at Thomas Jefferson, will be at Thomas Jefferson next year.
Thanks for being here with us. So we're going to cycle through. Again, that AGR program review is you have some options when you interact with the AGR platform and take opportunities with the funding that it provides. We really work out of that maintaining 18:1 classroom ratios and providing professional learning on that small group instruction piece. Also, a critical component is instructional coaching for those schools and teachers, and then each school does create performance objectives for those students on both the reading and the math side, and we also have to identify specific assessments. So this goes right along with our continuous improvement planning that all schools do, quite honestly, but we have to report out specifically for AGR on those tools just mentioned. We've had another change in the screener this year, so we've had FastBridge, we've had iReady Reading, and with the Act 20 requirements this year, with our 4K through third graders needing to take part, along with all students in the state of Wisconsin in the Ames Web screener, you're going to see some variations in screenings on the reading side as you look at the data when we go through. We have been consistent with using the iReady diagnostic, which is what we utilize three times a year on the math side in kindergarten through eighth grade. So the math scores you see will be consistent with the same screener over the last five to six years. Again, what we are trying to build through our opportunities with that 18:1 class size and really district-wide are how we respond to data. What does the data tell us about our students? We do this in a variety of ways, through administrator learning and collaboration around SIP plans, like I mentioned. This year, we had the personal support plans, which are the personal reading plans that were part of the legislative action that took place and part of the law regarding how we support students and create pathways for their progress. We have professional learning and coaching to support effective pacing and small group differentiated instruction in those areas that you see there, on both the reading and the math side, and then continuing to enhance and build capacity around the use of professional learning communities and how we collaborate together as administrators and as teachers and partner with families. So as I mentioned, you will see that we started in 24-25, the Ames Web screener, the ELA side. We went ahead to create consistency this year and utilized that Ames Web screener in our, all the way through elementary school. So you will see that through fifth grade, and it's part of our Act 20 legislation. The screener is actually being utilized K8 for a consistent data collection and outcomes moving forward, and that will continue next year. So on the reading side, we will continue to use Ames Web through eighth grade when we're looking at trends district-wide. iReady Math Diagnostic will continue to serve as our math screener in grades K8 as well. So when we take a look at, we like to present to you kind of an all buildings look and then an AGR look as well. So this is the first slide, we're going to start with math data. Overall, you will see an upward trend in all of our elementary buildings. You see a fall, winter, spring over the last two years' worth of data there, with the last three columns that you see being through the use of iReady diagnostic. Again, once again, the math scores will show you consistent data with iReady diagnostic screeners over the years that you see. So we do see a nice uphill trend. When you look at just the AGR buildings on the next slide, you again see that we are seeing an uphill trend line towards some increased outcomes. What you're seeing is the percentage of students who are falling kind of in that at benchmark or above on those data columns that you're seeing. Then as we move into kindergarten through second grade, you will see in kindergarten, students take a different assessment other than iReady and math. The iReady diagnostics are done on an iPad, and we are giving a one-to-one assessment where teachers sit down one-to-one with students and provide that assessment instead of iReady, because it gives us a little bit more pure data and allows us to make a few better instructional decisions around our kids and the outcomes that we're getting. So you will see in first grade and in second grade as well, you know, we're continuing to see some elevated scores as we've gone through the years in implementing iReady. Third through fifth grade, we actually see, again, some increases in the fall, winter, and spring of this year in terms of trends that we're seeing over time. And remember, tracking students from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, it's nice to see that we are seeing some uphill trends. We've seen some lower scores in our fourth grade over time, even though they're different cohorts, and this year we're seeing a nice uphill climb with our fourth grade math scores as well as from fall to spring in fifth grade this year. Then as we move to reading, reading will be a little bit different story. Moving to the Ames Web, the goal of Act 20 was really to focus on foundation skills, utilizing some of the concepts of the science of reading into our instruction for students in those early formative years. So in kindergarten, these are very different scores because they are very finite scores and different than the iReady and FastBridge scores that we have seen in the past, because they're very isolated skills, and this gives you a little bit of a background, even though they may not mean as much to you as they probably do to a teacher. The biggest thing is in first grade, you will see the entire score, the outcome scores that you will see are based on oral reading fluency, which is not something we ever assessed in isolation with iReady. So you'll see those scores are going to stand out as being lower, specifically in first grade, but that kind of gives you a little bit of the background around what are the scores that you're seeing in terms of the students at benchmark and above on what follows. So here, we've switched to reading. This is all buildings, all of our elementary buildings, again, from two years ago until now, even though we've had some different assessments, you'll see those are indicated in a few slides coming up. You know, we saw a little bit of a decline. Again, it's hard to tell when you're looking at from 58% to 57% to 56%. You know, that could be very few students that that really indicates. And again, these are normed tests, so in order for a student to even maintain, for example, 50% in the fall to 50% in the winter to 50% in the spring, learning does need to occur because the expectations to earn a 50% at the 50th percentile even increases with the knowledge and skills of the students. So there's some nice progress there. When we look at the AGR buildings, even though there was a change in assessments over the last two years, you will see at least a consistent look when we look at the overall progress of our AGR buildings. Broken down on the next couple of slides, when you see that kindergarten and first grade on the next slide, that's where you will see specifically a change. You can see the startup Ames Web in the fall of 24-25, we've indicated that there. You know, you will see some really, some declines in the percentages of students in terms of these isolated skills throughout the science of reading, which really adds value to the implementation of a DPI-approved universal resource in wit and wisdom at K2, along with the really great reading and G.O.D.s pieces that went with that, because the focus of that is to support teachers on the standards that are supporting the foundation, foundational skills that are in the standards.
Julie, could you just hold for a second and see if you can answer my question here pertaining to, when people look at the grids that are put in front of us here, they look at it and say, well, only 69% of our kids are doing well? That's failure, isn't it? 70, 80, 90 to 100? Isn't that a failing grade? And they don't quite understand it. Can you explain a little bit for everybody that will watch this? What does that mean to be at 69 or 60% when you look at the grid? What is this doing for you, the teachers, the administrators?
Sure.
Take it out to the public?
Sure. Well, I'll do my best to explain that. It really, I mean, it means that when you look at these scores, any screeners, any of the screeners that we have utilized, you know, there's two ways to look at things. We definitively emphasize proficiency levels. So overall, we are hoping to increase, especially with the adoption of a new resource, with the huge training that our dedicated staff are going through with the legislatively required foundational skills training. We are doing Cox Campus Training, which is 35-ish hours of foundational skills and early literacy skills training, that we are going to gain more tools in our tool bag for the rigor of what the standards is asking us to do. So the science of reading has really devoted a lot of time and attention into those skills that have proven to show that can benefit a child as they get older. If they have mastered these skills and make progress on some of these foundational skills, their chances of becoming a proficient reader increase as they go through elementary school. So proficiency is one way to look at it, and when you see those scores, such as 43% of our students in the winter of 24-25 in kindergarten were at benchmark and above, that certainly is something we tend to and want those proficiency levels to go up. We also look at growth. So when we are thinking about where a student started at the beginning of the year in their fall screener, we are also looking at the growth that a child can make based on the intensified instruction that we can supply and as targeted as we can to that student's needs by the time they get to spring. So there's a great, sometimes there's huge celebrations in the growth that our individual and small group and grade-level kids make, and then there's also celebrations in overall proficiency. So we are looking at striving towards both when you look at these scores, and these are new for the state of Wisconsin. There are many other school districts looking at scores that dropped from whatever screener they used before with Ames Web, because of the newness of it and also because of the adoption of the focus on those foundational skills and because all schools are in the process of transitioning to a universal resource and providing training for our teachers on the science of reading. And for those teachers who are really skilled and have some of those tools, because many of them do, how do we utilize them most efficiently? And for those where this is something new and new learning to them, how do we build and support their capacity to continue to instruct towards these foundational skills, which then lead to comprehension, because comprehension strategies are the next step after those foundational skills are mastered. So it doesn't explain, what it tells us is that we can continue to have work to do, and we look at both spaces. What is our overall proficiency, which is critically important, and what is, how also are students' growth over time? And are they gaining the skills? And what pathways and instructional kind of shifts are we making to allow students to make those greatest gains to meet the standards?
And we are still catching up from about three, four years ago that we need to be reminded of periodically, that we are still catching these students who were starting school, year four and fifth graders were starting school four years ago. So, thank you.
I think also the public needs to know that proficient means whatever the assessment tool says it means.
Yes.
So we always hear, only X percentage of students in the US are proficient at whatever, but no one knows what that means, except for the people implementing it know that it means whatever the assessment tool. And they'll say, well, you know, 20 years ago it was this, but it was a different assessment. So maybe students aren't as proficient as they were 20 years ago, or maybe it's a different assessment tool.
Right.
I understand focusing on both, but clearly growth is the one that's more useful when you can have the same tool. So fingers crossed that we can actually keep this tool for more than just a few years. We could actually track a kid all the way through.
Yes.
Elementary school, that would be really nice, instead of switching back and forth.
Yes, through eighth grade, that will be great if we can stick with that.
Well, it's nice to see this as we are, we're seeing progression in our three-year segment here, and that helps us to take a look at these types of things. And we just need to make sure that we're explaining that to our community to know that this is where we're at, we're improving.
Yeah. Ames Web is also changing their norms for next year, so there'll be a different categorization. You know, that could do something, just like when the state changes the thresholds for our students on the forward test or the pre-ACT or the ACT, it does impact, you know, the blip that you see depending on how those thresholds change, so.
You've done a very nice job explaining it.
Thank you. And, I don't know, do any of you have anything to add to that?
That was wonderful.
Okay, all right. So moving on to third...
Jane?
I just want to piggyback on what Lance said about the proficiency and what the national trends look like and stuff. We have to remember, they're only, this is only happening in public schools. Private schools don't have to take these tests. They aren't held to any standard. They do their own thing. So when we look at these tests, we have to realize that a lot of this is underfunded schools, overworked teachers, and we are doing our best, and it concerns me that that new Ames Web test percentages are so low. To me, it means it doesn't know what it's measuring.
I think the other thing, just quickly before moving on, that is a really good point, is it is a screener. Like, this is not the forward test. You know, screeners are important to us because both the iReady diagnostic, which digs in a little bit different way on the math side than the Ames Web screener does on the reading side, it is a tool for a teacher to make some instructional decisions around, and that's where the information is really important. If we put all of our eggs in one basket, for example, around a screener in terms of those outcomes, it certainly tells us where we have work to do, and it helps guide a teacher when they're looking at trends in their classroom on what isolated skills students need, but it's really a tool for us to say, what else does the student need? And what other measures are we seeing with classroom assessments, exit tickets, and informal informal assessments that also inform us about a student? And those are equally as important than a screener that's taken on, you know, an iPad in an adaptive format outside of maybe kindergarten and first grade where it is a teacher one-on-one assessment. So, you know, we have to measure those things and balance that when we're thinking about the outcome scores, but for sure, they're important for us to look at and hold us accountable for where we need to go, but...
Well, it also shows the importance of PLCs, our professional learning communities, because that's, that data is what you look at for the individual students to know where they are to move them forward, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. So moving on to the next, third through fifth grade, all AGR schools combined, you can see again the startup Ames Web, but we, you know, we're seeing some consistency in third grade, even some nice increases in fourth and fifth grade with the Ames Web assessment that we're seeing. And, you know, moving, you move from learning to read to reading to learn as you get into third through fifth grade, so then you're looking at more comprehension strategies around inferencing and cause and effect and all those higher-level standards skills. So we are seeing some nice increases. It's those foundational skills that we continue to build our capacity around. So in terms of next steps, we'll just continue to support our adults with professional development, Act 20, like I said, our teachers are all engaging in Cox Campus Training over the next four to five months, whether it's this summer into the fall, and we'll continue to train our new teachers in the foundational training utilizing Cox Campus. We continue to engage in practices around collaboration and pathways with our personal reading plans and what that looks like in our EMLSS systems as we grow the capacity of our teachers to, this is what our information is telling us about our students, now how do we support them and what do we do about that? Using those tools, that adult and student goal setting is really an impactful strategy that we have learned through the implementation of Leader and Me and just the 4DX model around goal setting and student and adult reflection. Continue our standards work and unpacking those standards and what do they mean for our learners. Same thing with math and our core resources and intervention supports around math. Our math coordinators continue to do great work, K-12 around... Our math coordinators continue to do great work, K-12 around ABMR at the elementary and standards work in the secondaries. And then, of course, enhancing the support of our multilingual learners. What's good for our multilingual learners is generally speaking, good for all of our learners, but sometimes they have very different and unique needs that we need to continue to tend to. So with that, unless there's anything that our, my teammates here want to additionally to share, you do have access to all of the school slides in your board book presentation, but we'll just entertain any questions if you have them.
Any follow-up questions from the board? We thank you very much for coming and presenting all of this. Good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Next agenda, agenda number ten. Ms. Polis will present the proposed changes to the 2025-2026 paid meal prices. So you're in the spotlight now?
So I'm Karen Fox, the Nutrition Services Director. And I just want, just would like to update you so that you're aware of the increase in the meal pricing for next school year. It will increase by five cents for all of the elementary, middle and high school lunches. Breakfasts are increasing by ten cents for all elementary, middle and high school. The adult breakfast is going up by ten cents and the adult lunch by twenty-five cents. So, pretty straightforward. Bear of good news, right? Any questions that I can answer?
Anything from the board? No? If not, you're seeking a motion, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the proposed changes to the meal prices as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item eleven. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we'll quickly move on to the special meeting. I'm calling a special meeting to order on Monday, June 23rd. Agenda item two, approve consent agenda, appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence and retirements. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, agenda three. I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss competitive negotiations of purchase, sale of real estate. This is according to Statute 19.851E to discuss the sale of property with our attorney that if discussed in open session, would harm the district's competitive interest. This will be a roll call.
So moved.
Second.
John Creacher?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli? Jane Rouge? Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much for all your help, everyone.